Okay, I'd like to call the June 14th, 2011 meeting of the Newport Beach City Council to order. May we have the roll call, please?
The record will reflect that Councilmember Rozansky is currently absent.
All right. Let's proceed then to clarification items for the consent calendar. Councilmember Daigle.
None.
Councilmember Curry.
None.
And Councilmember Sallett.
We have none.
Councilmember Hill.
None.
Councilmember Gardner.
None.
And I do have one question with regard to item number 23, which I note in the report. It says it's to be continued. Do we need to pull that item for a motion for continuance? Or can we just note that in the consent calendar motion?
You can just note it. This hasn't been a formally noted public hearing. It can just be noted.
Okay.
But this is this matter, when there's a vote on the consent agenda, then that will be continued.
Just note that that will be considered to be continued. Okay.
Yes.
As in the staff report. All right. And with that then, may we proceed to the item number two on current business, the 2011-12 budget. Dave?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. As you are well aware, this is our third consecutive study session on the proposed fiscal year 2011-12 budget. And I guess I consider this afternoon a chance to tie up some loose ends with the expectation that you might have questions or comments. And then tonight is the what would be the formal budget hearing. But I would expect enough to still be in play that I would not recommend that the council adopt the budget tonight, but that we wrap up as many loose ends as possible and go forward with the expectation that adoption would be in the evening on the 28th. So again, for folks at home, you have a chance to comment right now at public comment time, and then tonight at the official public hearing of the budget. So it all kind of ties in together. I'm going to, a quick reminder, offer you a quick reminder of where we are. We've had balanced budgets the last two years, well, well before that, but specifically the last two years. And indeed, we expect to close this current fiscal year's budget balanced with no use of reserves. The proposed budget for fiscal year 11-12 is also balanced with no use of reserves. It does significantly reduce our operating costs. It does look at a few new revenues. They're basically cost recovery. The net change, though, is, in effect, a significant reduction with a net change of about 7.7 million. We have a significant amount of position reductions that the city has seen since two years ago today. We're sitting here at this table. We had about 833 full-time positions. That goes down to 805 a year ago today. And then the budget you're seeing proposes about a 762 full-time position budget. There is more reductions and restructuring needed in 2012-13. We'll talk about that a little bit near the end. So today's discussion and some decision points for you folks. We're going to talk about lifeguards. We're going to talk about CERT. And we're going to talk about the DARE program. We're going to talk about helicopter law enforcement support. We're going to briefly talk about the Special Events Advisory Committee with an update on that. I'm going to note some important year-end actions. We're going to go through very briefly the budget checklist, and then some graphics that show the changes in historical positions, as well as, we have an obligation to report back to you every year on what the use of the council's discretionary funds. These are the $6,000 that are allocated by district. So that report is in here as well. For the council and for folks at home and for folks in the audience, there's a handout I'm following that may allow you to see things a little bit more clearly. So let me talk about lifeguards first. We have a consensus proposal that I'm proposing to amend the budget with that results in about $700,000 in savings based on the current budget, as well as safe and well-patrolled beaches. The organizational changes are these. We go from 17 full-time positions to 12 plus 1.4 full-time equivalent. It reduces upper management from four to three. There is an assistant chief position, but that would be an exempt position authorized under Measure V. This is outside of any labor group. This introduces the first flex position. It's a permanent part-time lifeguard position. It reduces overtime and callback pay. The net sum there is by about $60,000. There are some impacts to seasonal guards. I won't discuss those too much, but those do require a meet and confer. Indeed, the seasonal guards MOU is open right now. It expired at the end of April. Very importantly, I think, there are some, this assumes, and I can recognize today, the tentative agreement between the lifeguards and at least the city staff subject to council approval, an important change into the pension program. And that is full participation by the employees of the employee share of the pension contributions, and that's 9%. This is up from a 3.5% payroll deduction. Secondly, it establishes a new tier for new hires, and that is a two-at-50 tier. This and the last pay period, the pensionable pay would reflect the average of the last three years instead of the single highest year, and that new hires would also pay the 9% employee contribution. I'll stop there and see if you have any questions about that. I know that there's been a lot of attention given to this in your eyes, and I do, I do believe we have, maybe pause, and we have a couple people here from the lifeguards, including the head of the union, and then Rob Williams is here, who is taking the lead on developing some of this proposal.
Councilmember Curry.
Just to be clear, Dave, this does not reduce the staffing of those who are currently employed. It may redeploy, I think, one of them or part of one of them, but it doesn't require us to reduce the workforce. Is that accurate from what is people who are currently employed?
That's correct.
Keep in mind, we do have vacancies.
That's correct. Everybody that has a job today as a lifeguard will have a full-time job under this proposal as a lifeguard. There's one individual that would, yet to be determined, who would work basically as a split job. It's four tenths roughly, being a lifeguard, and six tenths, and I'll talk about that in just a moment, on another assignment that we thought was appropriate.
So for all the people who communicated to us and were concerned about safety at the beach because of staffing of lifeguards, what this proposal does is it maintains the current level of staffing in lifeguard management that we currently have.
That's correct.
That's correct. So everybody who's concerned about lifeguard staffing and safety on the beach ought to recognize that we have the same amount of people that we've had this year. Now, let's go on to the savings, because I think it's very skillful, Dave, that you've done this in a way that achieved the same amount of savings that we were going to get by having significant staff reductions. And we've done this because I think our lifeguards have been partners and been creative with us in some of these ideas here. And the first is, let's focus on these pension changes, because this is the first time that we now have a public safety unit picking up the full employee cost of the pensions, as I understand. Is that accurate?
That's correct.
So last year, we negotiated with our miscellaneous employees, and they are picking that up and phasing that in. We went from zero to 3.5% with safety, but now we're getting the full employee portion with lifeguards. Is that, that's accurate?
That's accurate, yes.
Okay. And that sets the stage for our negotiations going forward with police and fire later this year. The other thing is, because there's been a lot of focus in the last two weeks on pensions, is that we have gone from a pension formula at three at 50 for lifeguard management for all new employees to two at 50, which is a reduction of, if I can do the math, of about a third in terms of pension costs for new employees, if that more or less works out right. It's probably even a little bit more than that, given the multiplier effects. Is that accurate?
That's right.
So this is a very historic, and I think very innovative, approach and settlement that you have worked out with the lifeguards, because we have tackled the issue of pension costs, and I think done so and set the table in a very creative way that makes Newport Beach one of the leaders in pension reform. We've done so in a way that reforms the way we provide service so that we keep the same level of people and maintain the same quality level of service on the beach and life-saving ability on the beach, but we've done so more creatively. The other issue that was raised, and it got sort of international attention, is because of the total factors and the concentration of overtime with a couple of people, is the impact of overtime on public safety. And of course, that's a rampant issue in public safety departments really throughout the country. I was in Massachusetts, and there was a guy who was, who worked two full-time jobs. He was an EMT for the Port Authority. He was a fireman for the city of Boston and did 90 days of overtime, including five days where he worked both jobs simultaneously somehow. And apparently neither one of those is illegal in Massachusetts. But it's another demonstration of how overtime can be abused in certain contexts. But I see in our budget here, we are actually reducing the overtime pay as it relates to lifeguards in this budget going forward. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Well, so all told, I think these are outstanding reforms and excellent savings, and done in a way that works in partnership with our employees to protect these jobs, but also does so in a way that reduces the cost to taxpayers. So I would simply say, well done.
Councilmember Daigle?
Yes, I would agree with those comments by Councilman Curry. I thought it was a very good assessment of the issues. And it was never a question of the value of our employees to our community, and I hope that everyone can appreciate all of our residents and employees from a mature and reflective way that we are faced with a significant financial issue. And we had, for example, an employee that retired at $108,000 per year plus a COLA, so it's be a 2% per year adjustment. Let's say they lived for 30 years. Now, we have to have enough money in the system to sustain that benefit. And if you were to go out and try to purchase an annuity, and you said to the salesman, "I want $108,000 plus 2% for the next 30 years," you'd have to write a check for millions of dollars. And so the problem that we're facing is between the employee and the employer, there has not been that amount of money in the system. And the gap, of course, is reflected in our unfunded liability. So as a community, as an organization, we really have to address the inadequacies of these defined benefit plans. And so, and I appreciate very much the proposal this evening on our compensation. I think that sets a tone. It's an important policy where the council will be asking our employees to make a greater withholding of their compensation towards these pension payments. So I appreciate that the lifeguards have stepped up to this, and I think it provides a template for us moving forward. So thank you.
Okay. I did have a couple of other comments as well regarding this. With regard to the savings from the change in pension going to 9%, is that, are those savings included in the 700, or is that in addition to the savings?
They are included in the 700, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. I would still point out, though, that, and I agree, this is historic and groundbreaking and an excellent step forward. I very much appreciate the willingness of our employees to work with this solution. But I would still point out that at nine percentage points of payroll, that's still only about 25% of the cost, the total cost of the pension benefit. And so the city is still picking up a very large proportion of the overall pension cost. Just a point worth noting along the way here. But the other thing on there is that there's the word consensus proposal, and I guess I'm pleased that although we didn't start out in a perhaps as collegial way as we might have, we ended up in a more of a collegial discussion, I guess, of these solutions that included the input of our employees, the people that are doing the jobs. And I think that's a good thing. And so I too applaud you, and especially the fact that we've also addressed the organizational structure, the management structure, by slimming that down as well. So on many, many levels, this is a good solution. You and our lifeguards and other staff are to be congratulated, Dave, on this solution. Are there any other comments on this? Okay.
I had one brief comment to add to this slide. One is, I felt like as the, as the chief executive of the organization, I should be the one who is farthest ahead in terms of paying for my share of the retirement costs. So while my position goes to a 10.42% contribution in January, I've asked, I'm going to ask that human resources start to deduct that immediately at the same time the lifeguards do, because again, I think that sets the appropriate tone for the organization. They shouldn't be the first ones to have to do this. I'm going to talk next about the CERT program unless there are any questions about what we just discussed. You'll recall that there was a number of, there were a number of speakers at your last meeting about CERT. And we had set CERT up in an initial org chart whereby the CERT person was reporting 100% of the time to a person in lifeguards who was also in the fire department. We had a good meeting with the CERT volunteers and rethought that, and the organization chart is now slightly different, but significantly different. And that would be the six tenths of the time this person is working on CERT, they would report to the person in charge of fire prevention, which the CERT folks were comfortable with, and the fire chief and I are also comfortable with. So I appreciate the CERT volunteers' input and discussion on this. And I have heard from them, they seem to be quite happy with this change, so I'm happy to offer it as well. Finally, just on lifeguard, just a graphic that shows those changes. Again, about a 700,000 amount savings from the 4.55 million budget, 17 to 12.4 FTEs. I'm going to move next to helicopter law enforcement support, otherwise known as ABLE, at least in our system. As you'll remember, ABLE is set up as a joint powers agreement, a JPA, between two cities, us and Costa Mesa. When one city pulls out, the JPA goes away. The city of Costa Mesa pulled out, so the JPA stops, and there can be no helicopters flying as of June, July 1st, 2011. So we went ahead and had a discussion with the city of Huntington Beach. We have a short-term contract that we'll bring to you on June 28th that will cover July at least in 2011, so there'll be no interruption in helicopter air support service. We also have the option to do a one-year and extendable contract. It's $700 an hour with 1,000 hours of flying time, which we think is very reasonable. I thank Chief Johnson and Assistant City Manager Dana Smith for working on this with us. And we will, this does give us some time to look at some other alternatives. We may stay with Huntington for a while. We may stay with Huntington a lot longer. But it does allow us to look at the current assets and potentially pick a different model, and you've seen those floating around in the press. One might be a private sector model. One might be a larger regional group that includes us and Costa Mesa and Huntington and Santa Ana and Irvine that may be more cost-effective.
Councilmember Daigle?
Yes, I had a couple of kind of issues that I wanted to have addressed. The first is where you see this going on a regional basis. I mean, we have a situation where Newport has had three helicopters. Huntington had three. There's been three helicopters in our hangar that belong to the county. There's probably more county helicopters out there. There's three for Anaheim. And I'm kind of wondering how, with all this equipment, if there's going to be a move to sort of have less equipment, cover a greater area, and what kind of a steady course can our community be on, so we're not sort of careening from service to service as this works its way out? And then the second question I, issue that I'd like to have addressed is, in terms of the purchase of hours, what are we going to be looking at in the future as far as what is going to be call-based hours and where are going to be patrol hours? And when I went up in the helicopter, there was a real distinction between patrolling and between calls. And when you look at the previous model, I mean, Santa Ana had it pretty good because they had a third of the calls. We're paying, what, maybe 10% of the service? So what do you anticipate in the future? What direction will we be moving in as far as patrol-based versus call-based and just where you see this system going regionally?
One of the challenges that we faced when Costa Mesa pulled out of ABLE was the fact that there was not something else in place at the time. And so we've kind of been in a scramble to try and find something else. What we've done here is come up with a short-term solution with Huntington Beach to give us time to actually vet out those details, where we're going to go in the future. There's a lot of advantages to a regional model. There's some disadvantages to that as well. Understand that when we talk about three helicopters, we have, ABLE has three, Huntington Beach has three, those aren't three flyable helicopters, generally because of the maintenance schedules on those helicopters and they're pretty, pretty extreme. There's always one, if not two, helicopters down for service. So with three helicopters, most agencies will have three, so they can have one for sure flying at all times and sometimes two. So that's why the three helicopters rotation, and the life of the helicopters are much longer when you, when you rotate three through that way. So that's why there's three in a lot of the agencies. The, what was the other question that you had about?
Where you kind of see that going? And then the other question is, when we purchase our hours, or how do you see the allocation in the future? Are we going to be call-based hours or patrol hours or a mix?
Yeah, mix. It'd be a mix of both. Patrol, call-based hours would go into that patrol-based hours, would count towards that. But I definitely think we need patrol-based hours. The helicopter is, quite frankly, a force multiplier for us, particularly here in Newport Beach. Allows us to do a lot of patrols where our police cars can't get to, and a lot quicker. So we really, I think, need that patrol-based policing from a helicopter service. So that's what, that's what I would be recommending. Again, this is all going to be contingent upon what that final model is, what that final model looks like once we're done vetting out all the options, whether it's a regional or whether it's a contract, and whether it's a private-public partnership. Those are all the things that are actually very detailed and take a lot of time to figure out the details to. So that's what we're, we're kind of in the process of that now. And this is just to tide us over until we can come back to you with actually more answers to those questions, if that will help.
Councilman Curry?
Yes, Chief, first of all, I want to congratulate you for putting this together. And I see Councilman Devin Dwyer from Huntington Beach is in the audience today, and we appreciate their cooperation and working with us to provide this interim solution. Is there going to be a protocol established? I presume that there'll be Huntington Beach officers in the helicopter so that they're acquainted with the topography and the neighborhoods of Newport Beach and all of that?
Yes, that's a great question. We actually talked about that at our meeting. Assistant City Manager Dana Smith actually helped me with that, put this all together with the meeting with the city manager of Huntington Beach and their police department. We talked specifically about that. My concern is, we have now police officers in our helicopters that are 10, 20-year veterans of patrolling our streets here in Newport Beach. You don't have that from a pilot from another city. So what we've asked for is to, first and foremost, allow our pilots, our officers, to go up in the helicopter with Huntington Beach, to kind of give them a lay of the land, maybe show them what's important to us. We've already started forwarding our, our crime statistic information to them and our hotspots and crime information that we're concerned about. We have some protocols that Lieutenant Fishbacher, soon-to-be Lieutenant Fishbacher, is coordinating in those efforts with Huntington Beach. So that was a big concern of mine as well, and I think that we're on the road to working that out so that, of course, we need Huntington Beach. If it's Huntington Beach, we need them to take ownership in Newport Beach and patrol Newport Beach. And I think that's what we're working on, and hopefully I think we're going to get there.
Councilmember Sallett?
I just got one question, Chief. How does the, under the proposed one-year extendable contract, how does the 1,000 hours of flying time compare to what we use now under ABLE?
Well, ABLE originally was flying 3,000 hours a year. That was cut back this last year and half.
3,000 Newport or 3,000 total?
3,000 total. That's between Newport, Costa Mesa, and then when Santa Ana came onboard, Santa Ana. That was cut back to 1,500 hours. So 1,500 hours was basically split between the three cities, Newport, Costa Mesa, and Santa Ana. So when you split it that way, it's roughly 500 hours of flight time in Newport Beach. However, it's, it's not as easy to equate as that, because the time up in the air, if you want a helicopter, I don't care if it's in Costa Mesa or Huntington Beach or Santa Ana, if it's up in the air is important to me for when something major happens. So we have 15-hour, 100 flight hours of it being up in the air, 500 committed specifically to our patrol time or calls for service.
Okay. No other questions? Thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you.
I'm going to move next to the DARE program. And as you know, our goal was to try and preserve a program that involves a uniformed staff member teaching a DARE-like curriculum for appropriate schools that are interested in this. And Newport remains one of them, the three, probably three different cities in the county that are still teaching some type of DARE program. DARE requires a sworn police officer, and the cost of that is about $170,000 a year. So we proposed in our budget process is to change that, including eliminating the officer and moving that individual back to patrol. But councilmembers asked us to come back with an alternative that might keep that same presence and maybe a slightly different curriculum. We couldn't call it DARE, but it might be arguably very similar, also with a uniformed person. So working with the police chief and the fire chief, we think we have our answer, and that is to involve that part-time lifeguard position with, keeping him busy during the school year, him or her, that would indeed switch over, report to the police department, take on that role. The net savings is about $80,000 a year. They would be wearing a, probably a crime prevention officer uniform during that period. No weapon, but looks pretty similar.
As long as you don't call the new program dope, I guess that makes a lot of sense. Do we have any other questions here regarding that? Okay. Well, I think this is, I'm one of the ones that really had wanted to find a way to save a program like this. And so here again, is a good example of employing creative thought to maintain service levels and programs but save a lot of money. So I really appreciate it, and especially appreciate the continued contact with our young children on the issue of drug abuse, as well as positive interaction with blue-uniformed employees of the city. So, thanks.
I'm going to move next to the Special Events Advisory Committee, otherwise known as SEAC. And you're not, I'm not going to talk about this much today. As you folks know, we set up a new review process for where we sponsor or assist in fee waivers with the various special events that occur in Newport. That process is underway. I was hopeful it'd be done a little sooner, but the committee has been working very hard, and they're busy people. They're hard to schedule, but they've been putting in hours in their own time in committee meetings. So just as an update for you, they have one more meeting, June 16th, just two days from now. Then, and they'll have those rankings. We'll make some funding recommendations with that and bring that back to you on June 28th.
Okay.
I'm going to go next to, I'm going to identify some year-end actions. Council policy F12, F2 allows the city manager to assign some of the fund balance left over for the year. We do have some left over for what I'll call critical efforts next year. And they're basically things that are carrying over, or things that popped up here at the end of the year. They're listed there. Thailand's management, neighborhood revitalization, you see $700,000 dedicated to those. Those are key council goals. We also have some other things that we think are important to support in the community, including the tennis court resurfacing at Newport Harbor, the Bergerson Aquatic Center. This is a one-third match for their final effort. And then I'm roping the Public Works Department into completing two tasks on the bike committee's list that I think are important to complete. So I will assign those funds, which means basically I kind of put a rope around them that still needs to come back to you for appropriation. So just so you know that that assignment is being done. And then finally, I wanted to mention...
Excuse me, Dave. Nancy?
Yeah. Does the school district put anything into the tennis courts?
They are, yes. Councilmember Hill is familiar with the project, too.
Yes, I, I'll be wrong, but the order of magnitude is it's about a hundred and, $200,000 project.
And, and obviously, the school uses them from nine to three or four, whenever the tennis teams are working out and kids are using them, but the public can use them on the weekends and...
And it's one of the questions we, I asked on both these, with the Bergerson pool and the tennis courts, is to make sure that there is a public, a significant, long-term public access to those. And it's certainly true with the tennis courts, we are, we are going to need to extend out the Bergerson Aquatic Center agreement longer, and I think the school district has been more than willing to do that with us. Finally, I mentioned lower Newport Bay dredging. This is not news to some of the council members, including the Thailand's effort, Thailand's Management Committee group. We have, in a very exciting way, the first opportunity to have the Corps come in and do a significant dredging project. Thanks to the President and Congress, there is $2 million holding in there, and we expect that project to start here at, in September. However, if we were to do the whole thing, it'd cost anywhere between 15 and 20 million to get it exactly right. But there is a window there of about four to four and a half million that would get all of the contaminated sediments, sorry, all the not suitable-for-beach-disposal sediments out of the lower bay, which is a significant achievement, and it's a window of time, an open window, where we could potentially put those up with the port of Long Beach. So our goal, my recommendation to you... our goal, my recommendation to you, is that we do consider a loan from the Tidelands Fund of up to 2.5 million to get this project done, if indeed, the window opens and the port is available. So I'm, hopefully you'll be supportive of that when that comes back to you.
Just to be clear, that's a loan to the Tidelands, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Tidelands would have to pay back the general fund-
That's correct.
-for that money. Okay.
And we don't, the lower bay doesn't get touched, unfortunately, for years and years. And this is, again, I think probably a once-in-a-70-year opportunity to do this, and we really should do it now.
That's great generational planning.
Yes.
With regard to the $2 million in the federal budget, how much more whistling through the cemetery do we need to do here before we know that money is really available?
We do know that money is available. I'm, I would almost, almost right in blood that the project's going to happen. But it's made it through the full appropriations process. The Core is getting ready to roll on it. They've got the bids out, in fact, and the bids may have been closed. And if we're able to contribute more money to it, they'll just expand that project. And hopefully, the good bid climate will indeed make that $2.5 million go even further.
And the full $4.5 million of expenditure is dependent upon Port of Long Beach being able to accept more non-suitable sediment.
Which, right now, it seems they will be able to do that, because other projects that would have gone into that port are slower than this project.
But even if we couldn't dispose of it in port, we could do perhaps other areas-
We could. We could skim off some tops.
-for beach disposal or offshore or something. I mean, it would be, again, a shame not to take advantage of the opportunity of having the Core there, and be the best if we could do the Port of Long Beach. But if not, we shouldn't just cancel the idea of expansion.
This $2.5 gets the contaminated material and a number, if not all, of the high spots. So it buys us some time.
Okay. Very good.
You have the budget checklist in your packet later tonight. Just a reminder of what that is. This is, the budget checklist is kind of a complex little document that says, hey, we have a proposed budget, and we're amending the proposed budget. And those items are on the checklist. And they include some capital improvement plan, rebudgets, that's what CIP means, and then some special requests. Some of those come from the community through the council members. And it will, at next time, include the SEAC, the Special Events Advisory Committee recommendations.
Would you just as soon we wait until this evening to discuss items on there?
Now or later is fine. It's fine if you talk about them now, because it helps-
Okay. Well, I have two concerns. One, I would like to see the, as you know, the Kona Mar bid has been proposing for some time, to do a planning project. And they're willing to put quite a bit of money towards it. So I'd like to see that on there with the city doing some matching. And that would require Steve figuring out how much it would cost to do the plan.
Is that the choke point?
But actually, it's more the, the entry.
Yeah.
The city entry.
Okay.
I have re-titled it.
We did, Mayor Portem Gardner, think of that as coming out of the Tidel, sorry, the Neighborhood Revitalization money.
Okay, fine.
So I did retain that.
All right, great.
And obviously, the question will be, will it be one of the priorities for them?
That's part of that $500,000 designation.
That's correct.
Okay. Secondly, I noticed that $10,000 for the Babo Island Historical Society. I'm sorry, there are, said we had 90 members, 90 members out of a population of almost 80,000. I'm a big supporter of historical things in our area. I mean, why wouldn't I not be with a father who wrote so much about it? But I don't know how we're giving that much to simply a Babo Island society. I think that we, I'm concerned that they're going to be signing a lease, because if we can't expand that into a Newport Beach Historical Society, I can't see supporting it down the road at all, certainly not for another year. So I hope to have maybe a fuller discussion on that this evening. But that is a big concern of mine. It just seems a lot of money for a very small minority.
Okay. Any other comments on this?
So concluding the checklist discussion, then, if the council agrees with the things that we've talked about today, and I get that sense at least now, but I welcome other comments, we will add these, if we haven't, to the checklist, and they'll come back to you on the 28th. And again, if there are other items out there in your review of the checklist that need to be on that, please let us know as soon as possible. One requirement of the council policy involving discretionary funds, these are funds that are assigned by district to individual council members. They have to be for a recognized communication, or public, or community support event. So I'm required to provide this to the public and to you, once each year. And this is our time to do that. You see there are some remaining balances down there. I think we have everything up to date. If we don't, we'll continue to catch it up. There is one more that, Mr. Hen, you have on there that's not shown, and that's $1,000 for the Fourth of July effort in West Newport. We did, so deduct another $1,000 from your list.
Councilmember Curry?
Yeah, it also doesn't reflect $500 for the Relay for Life, and about $3,000 for a park bench meeting at Cannon Park. I think there was some emails that didn't get read or something.
Okay. We'll make sure. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Also, the bus benches in Newport Coast, are we going to get a figure on that before the year-end ends? Because I had committed to help that.
Yeah, that was small enough. I took it out of some of the City Manager's professional and technical resources.
Okay, all right.
I think that's more of a unified benefit.
Okay.
Any other questions about this? So we'll tune it up. So starting to wrap up here, just a reminder, our year-end closing projections are roughly 2.1 million in the black, however we will. I have done a number of assignments, as I just explained to you. This is the position change. You see the 833 to the 805 to the roughly 762. I say roughly, because we'll talk next about the position checklist, position control. And let me just finish this thought, and we'll come back to position control. So again, a reduction of about 71 positions in two fiscal years. This is the chart. Notice at the bottom, we start here at 700. So we're not trying to be misleading, but we're trying to throw it all on that same chart. We were at 833, down to 762, which predates the Newport Coast annexation, in fact. This is a little look at how full-time equivalents have changed. You can see, we go from, we had gone up, we started to pare back with-
Dave, you may want to define that.
Oh, sorry. Full-time equivalent is a part-time person. So for instance, if you're a part-time person, and you work half of a full-timer's job, we call you a .5 FTE. And if you join with another .5 FTE, well, gosh, that's one FTE, or a full-time equivalent. So in effect, we have part-time people working 121 full-time equivalent jobs. So those could be, these are people like our marine life refuge, our tide pool rangers, library pages, lots of part-time folks work for the city. Seasonal lifeguards are in here. So we have hundreds of people that make up this 121. But you can just kind of get a track to see where we've been, and where we're headed. So what's, and let me do, I'm going to pause now and talk about the position checklist. You have a document in front of you. It looks like this. We can put it up on the screen if you'd like to talk about any of this. This is called, what I would call, position control, where we, that we, the council has the opportunity to accept or not accept positions. A lot of these are eliminations, due to attrition, some due to layoffs. I'm apologizing in advance. Position control in the past has been about that big. And now it's three pages, because you could see all of the restructuring is being implemented with this list. So we will bring this back to you for final budget adoption. But if you had questions about it now, or concerns, I'd welcome that. There are a couple of things in here that I draw your attention to. Does Ed have one there? We're introducing a couple of new types of positions that I hope the council will be comfortable with. Indeed, it's a couple of council members telling me they didn't like the old types of positions that made me think about this. And that is, we did have two brand-new, full-time budget analysts in this document, and I changed that, because we've always wanted to set up what I would call a smart graduate-level fixed term, so a two-year term, almost like an internship, but a graduate-level program, where someone would come in and operate, serve as a budget or administrative analyst at a fairly inexpensive pay. We're talking $25,000 to $28,000 a year. They just come in for two years, and they move on to do something else. So they'd be limited-term positions. So I'm proposing that those two budget analysts that would have been new revert back to this kind of, I'm calling them a budget fellow, or a budget, which is grander than a budget intern. We're going to work with a couple of the area colleges to develop that. These positions, one of the positions will be split in three different departments, assigned to administrative services with Susan and Tracy here for guidance. But I'm hopeful this is a nice new trend, it's an inexpensive new trend, and we could take advantage of some smart people just coming out of college, headed to graduate school, that might want to make this their first point to work at, in a municipality. So I'd welcome your comments on that. But you'll see there are two positions in there along those lines, with significant savings, again, from proposed budget. And then finally, let's see, go ahead.
Are there, what are the schools around here that have public governance programs, for example, that you would, what are the more prominent schools?
Certainly UCI. USC has a graduate program locally, and then Chapman. Those are probably the main ones that we'd look towards. Other cities have done this successfully. We should do it successfully, too.
So that's where you'd focus your discussion, then, is on those schools that really have good programs.
That's right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I do have a question. On some of these new, or these proposed at-will positions, what is going to be the pension withholding, pension contribution withholding on those positions?
An at-will position would have the same pension withholding that the represented groups would have. For instance, I'm an at-will position, and my withholding is the same as any miscellaneous employee. So similar to, if there was an at-will safety position, that individual would be subject to the same withholding that the safety groups are required to have.
Okay. There's different safety groups, though. Some of them, because now we have lifeguards potentially at a higher withholding. So that, the chief assigned to that would have that level versus the new police, assistant chief would have whatever's in police?
I can just offer to you, Councilmember Dagel, what we've done with current contracts, in that you are subject to whatever changes are negotiated by the group. So even a person coming in with a 3.5% deduction, if the whole group moves to a 9% deduction, that person moves also. It's spelled out in that person's contract.
And then if you can refresh my memory, what is our current management association withholding? Is it 3.5?
If you're in safety, it's a 3.5% payroll deduction. If you're a miscellaneous member, it is headed towards what is, in effect, 10.42%. It's 8% of the EPMC, then 2.42% of the employer rate. Sorry to use so much jargon for the public, but-
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Okay, continuing on, what's next for us? Tonight is the formal budget hearing. Again, if you're a member of the public, and you have an opportunity to talk in a little bit here, and also tonight. And then we take any additional council and community direction. Over the next two weeks, the Special Events Advisory Committee should finish up. We will post the final agenda item for budget adoption on June 23rd. That's a Thursday, so that allows folks to read it, hopefully five days in advance. June 28, there's more opportunity for public comment, and then hopefully budget adoption. And then I want to move to what happens in July 1. And this isn't done, as we've said. There are more strategic efforts. We still use the good-to-great model. We talk about using disciplined thought to take disciplined action. And that will continue in 2011, '12. I'm going to summarize what that kind of looks like. And I welcome your comments. If you want to be more specific, we can do that, too. We'll continue focus on performance management, and that includes strengthening our internal business practices. We're doing more contracts, so our contract oversight needs to be strong. Your council and members of the public have asked for even additional, more extensive, more expansive, cost and revenue kinds of studies. So we're moving in that direction with improving those internal businesses, business practices. Those involve technology enhancements. We have an IT strategic plan underway right now. That allows us to also improve customer service, hopefully, allow electronic plan check, for instance, more document imaging. So you'll see that. And then importantly, if anyone had any question, is the contracting out done with this budget? It's not. We need to continue to look at different ways of providing city services. That could involve sharing services regionally, as we discussed with the helicopter law enforcement program. It could involve us working with one other city to potentially share a single service and do, have one city do it for the other. One that comes to mind for that is jail operations. And then also, private contracting for more outsourcing options. And we could talk about some specifics if you'd like. At the same time, we're trying to keep our key projects managed and going forward, including the Civic Center, still on time, still under budget. Neighborhood revitalization, Tidelands Management. We're continuing to refocus our economic development function to make sure it really nails what Newport Beach needs.
What is happening on that front?
We have our consultant on board. Dana, you want to chime in? Ask Dana Smith to comment.
We have a draft report from our consultant, Cindy Nelson, that Dave has yet to review, but internally, staff has reviewed it. We have, we're starting to frame up a series of economic development steps that look at our bids, that work a little bit more closely with our chamber, and visit Newport Beach as well. So we are, we're kind of circling the wagons, and we've budgeted money for economic development. But we want to make sure we come back to you with a little bit more strategic plan that looks at all of our partners.
And then finally, one of the big efforts next year, of course, is our negotiations with our labor groups. As Councilmember Dagel noted, you have your compensation philosophy on the agenda for later tonight. But our major public safety groups all come up this fall. And then the other groups, we call them miscellaneous, but think of persons who are not safety, comes up in spring of 2012.
Before you go on, Dave, I had a couple of comments here, you know, especially with regard to private contracting for city services. I want to make sure that we have really an agnostic view of that, where we need to look at all departments in the city. We need to have a view that there are no sacred cows associated with that. We also need to have a balanced view, that we need to be careful about resorting to outsourced providers, in that we want to make sure that there is a good pool of outsourcers to choose from in any given situation. We don't want to be reliant upon only one resource as we do that. We want to make sure that as we rely upon, consider relying upon outsourced vendors, that we retain very high service levels. The service levels that are unique to this city, that we've all come to love and expect, and that make this such a special city. But at the same time, we owe it to ourselves to understand the savings associated with outsourcing. And should we choose not to outsource, the cost that we are incurring for that decision. And we may choose not to, but we always have an obligation to understand the cost. And so I see opportunities, although our municipal operations department has been a leader in private contracting on behalf of the city, I see other opportunities that need to be examined, including residential trash pickup, and perhaps other key functions associated with municipal operations department. With regard to our information technology platform here, we are in the midst of completing an IT strategic plan for the city. I'll be very surprised if that plan doesn't identify outsourcing and infrastructure opportunities, cloud computing, all that sort of thing. And so I see, I see this as a process that needs to be engaged in, in a very consistent way. And with respect to that, I'd like to ask council's informal view here of the idea of revisiting a subject that we passed over last time when we talked about budgeting. And that has to do with the Office of the City Attorney. We've looked at lots of departments- We've looked at lots of departments already with regard to an increased reliance upon outsourcing, and I'd like to get council's sense of whether they think it would be appropriate to have another look at that, perhaps at the study session upcoming here, the study session on June 28th, and have another look at that and see what the spread of alternatives are available to us to move on the spectrum here as between in-sourced solutions and outsourced solutions with regard to our office of the city attorney and legal costs. And so David, is that enough? I think I see nodding heads here. Is that enough guidance for you to come back with something in a couple of weeks? This would not be, you know, an nth degree down to the gnat's eyelash, but we'd like to see, you know, the spread of alternatives described.
Certainly, I can do that for you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, great. All right, then, Councilwoman Daigle?
Yes, appreciate your comments as far as the contracting out. And within our council's 15-point fiscal sustainability plan, item number nine that we all adopted and approved is the city will consider competitive contracting of services and equipment when appropriate and where clear, cost-effective alternatives exist. As part of our adopted fiscal sustainability plan, and if I could also identify three areas that I would appreciate your exploring. And the first, as you made reference to, is the jail. And perhaps we can even get an update as to what the latest is with Costa Mesa, and if our communications have yielded any progress in that area. And then secondly, call dispatch, and I have been reading the budget and went through and noticed the really substantial compensation that occurs within that department, so I'd like to have that evaluated or explored. And then the third area would be the fire prevention, and that's an area where other cities have looked to private sector contractors, and particularly when we're dealing with uniform codes, you know, that's an area where the private sector can provide services. So those would be the areas that I would appreciate taking a look at.
Okay. Councilmember, or excuse me, Mayor Pro Tim Gardner?
As we look, and I support the earlier statements, but one of the concerns I have is that as we outsource, we're losing some very, very good jobs for the community at large. And I would like us to also have a consideration that as we look at those people who are responding to our RFPs and that sort of thing, that we also, as one of the qualifications, look at their methods of compensation. In other words, if someone's paying, hiring nothing but part-time people and paying the minimum wage, and someone else is providing a career path and then a path to some medical coverage or something, I think that that should be, should count for something. And it shouldn't simply be the cheapest company on the block, but that we should look at that as well.
Okay, do we have other comments on that? All right, Dave?
Okay, so, almost done here. In closing, I wanted to just comment on, I think this was a fairly noteworthy process this year. We had several new staff members participating in it. We did, we completed at least two major restructuring involving our, first involving our general services and utilities functions now underneath municipal operations with significant cost savings there. Our community development, that's the planning and building and code enforcement and economic development side of things. We're happy to have that merged together under Kim's leadership. And that is not so much a cost savings, but a service improvement. And so while all this was going on, we were going through the budget process, making significant reductions and eliminating positions, including layoffs for the first time in a long time in this community. They did engender a lot of community feedback and played out in what I'd call a challenging public environment. And to that note, I want to thank the employees of the city for walking down this path with us. It has not been easy at all, especially when your job's on the line, and I very much appreciate the confidence they have had in me and in the department head team. And I'll thank the department head team in just a minute. And then we also added a significant new process, many of them actually, but one of them being CAC. So this is in addition to just the normal budget year. So again, in closing, I want to thank Tracy McCrainer, the finance director, and supported by a great team over there, Dan, Susan, Tammy, and more, many more. And then there were a number of departments that were really on the cutting edge of this, including fire and lifeguards, Chief Morgan, Rob Williams is here from lifeguards, Chief Johnson certainly, and his top admin team, Mark Harmon with MOD. I think Mark went through among the most significant reductions in this entire budget. HR, under-respected at least, but that whole position list, they're responsible for implementing it and dealing with the bumping process and making sure we comply with MOUs, and then ultimately doing the layoffs. And I also like to, so I'd like to thank Terry Cassidy for her leadership there. The city manager's office, we've had some great help from Dana, Rob, and Tara and our support staff. I'd like to thank the city council. This has not been a bumpless process. This has been challenging. I know you guys have been on the cutting edge of this, the bleeding edge in some ways as we have. And then finally, the community. It's never easy to implement these kinds of changes in the public environment. I think by and large, people have been remarkably thoughtful and respectful, and I appreciate that very much.
Back to you. Okay, well, I would just make one other comment. Those of us that are old enough to remember the Ed Sullivan Show will remember that there were regular episodes on that show where they had this fellow that would stand up and, with a number of very thin poles and plates, and he would spin the plates on those poles, and he would keep going until he had probably eight or nine plates spinning all at once and none of them falling to the floor. So Dave, you are our chief plate spinner.
I broke a few of them.
I'm not aware of any that you've broken, actually. A few close calls, but, yeah, but I want to express on behalf of council our appreciation for the leadership that you've shown and the courage that you've shown in leading this effort, but even more importantly, maintaining the effort as a collegial and collective thought process here by involving so many people on your staff and in the organization. And it's just been a unique and excellent process so far, in my view. Thank you. All right, any other, oh, Councilmember Curry?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, if I could just sort of add on to those comments. You know, for a couple of years now, we've been stressing performance measurement and performance management, and I think this year, we really saw some evidence of that with our department heads and some of the budget recommendations that came forward. From the safety departments and police and fire, we saw some really excellent changes in management that had some very significant cost improvements. And I can say it now while he's sitting here, I think Mark Harmon is a real unsung hero in this organization for how he's been able to identify savings, significant million-dollar type savings in his operations as he moves forward there, and I'm very, very proud of that. And I would also like to compliment, because I have heard it all over town this week, from the BIA and from people who are doing business in our city and from major developers, the 180-degree turnaround in the perception of our building department and in the processing of applications in our city. And I just want to compliment Dana and Kim and Jim Campbell and everybody involved in that, because you probably don't get to see, as we perhaps do, the complete change in the perception of how Newport Beach is as a place to do business. And I just want to thank you for that, and you should know that it's being noticed in the community and in the broader Orange County business community, and I'm very, very proud of that achievement.
Mr. Mayor, I hope I wasn't out of place last evening telling the Irvine Company that I thought they could get an over-the-counter check on their new high-rise building.
In exchange for the fee that they owe us, perhaps we could arrange that. Okay. All right, very good. Anything further then on the budget? Councilmember Selig?
I just have one question on the Corona Del Mar project. How's that going to work in this $500,000? I mean, it seemed to me that that would be a project that would be like we did in the past, where we would budget a line item for it, the bid, it offered to make a contribution, and would have the contribution down, so it's a little bit fuzzy to me right now.
It is fuzzy, and you can imagine that the $500,000 is not a precise number, obviously. That's in part why it's picked. What this is, is again, a reservation of funds, saying that, in effect, I'm putting a little rope around it, but it's subject to specific authorization by you with a specific amount. So if indeed the neighborhood revitalization committee makes that one of their top recommendations and we move forward, we'll come back to you with Public Works with a formal cost item, and you would appropriate it accordingly. So instead of all the, that money going into the reserves, it in effect stays there and has held for further appropriation.
Has anyone put a price tag on this design?
Steve, any thoughts? Put the poor Public Works...
Was it 400,000 or the 500,000, 100, 200?
Could be.
200?
We don't know yet, but we'll be talking about that with the neighborhood revitalization committee.
But the cost is for design?
It's design only, not construction.
Construction, yeah. And it would be, I guess it would be a budget amendment?
It would be.
Where you would be transferring from a designated reserve to...
Right. This is just a way of telling the U and the public that we haven't forgotten that this is something that's coming up next year, and it doesn't have a line item right now, but it will.
Is that adequate? Okay. All right. Anything else on the budget? Very good. Then it's time for public comments on the budget.
Mr. Mayor, councilpeople, city manager, Kiff. My name's Gary Standard. I'm the resident of Corona Del Mar, chief radio officer of our Newport Beach Racers Group, and part of the leadership of our search program. On behalf of our almost 900 volunteers, I want to express our appreciation to our city manager, Dave Kiff, our fire chief, Mike Morgan, for their willingness and openness to review our concerns in a joint meeting last week and agree to a revised plan. Also, I want to thank our mayor and city council for their openness and resolve and responsiveness to the various communications you received over the last few weeks about our concerns. And here's a case where through good, open dialogue, we, I think, came to a good compromise and conclusion to this. Thank you.
Other comments on the budget?
My name is Jim Mosher. I wanted to point out that there didn't seem to be any copies of the position control list available in the lobby. At least I could not find one, so it made it a little difficult for the audience to follow that portion of your discussion. But what I really wanted to talk about was these council discretionary grants. As best I can tell, this feature, giving each of you a small allotment of money to spend on causes of special interest to you, is something that was added by a previous council in around 1994. And I am glad to see on the proposed budget that the amount per district is being reduced from 7,000 down to 6,000, but in my view, the correct amount should be zero. There are several things wrong with these funds, the biggest of which, in my view, is their inconsistency with our form of government. Our charter vests substantial powers in you as a collective body, making collective decisions in noticed public meetings, but to the best of my knowledge, when we elect you, we don't give you any special power as individuals to dispense public funds. Second, the funds perpetuate the myth that the residents of each district have a single friend and advocate on the council, and that may, to a large extent, be how things are currently viewed. For more than 50 years, we've had district-based residency and nomination requirements, but we've never voted by district. So we elect, the entire city elects each of you, and we presumably expect you all to represent us equally. Finally, the current system of funds being dispensed by individuals with no real authority and without public input could lend itself to abuse. Policy 812 actually requires each expenditure to be reported back to the full council at one of the regular evening meetings, and with a justification of the public benefit for each expenditure. It's good that there was the presentation made today, but as far as I can tell, the reporting has been quite erratic. I would suggest considering going back to the pre-1994 system, where you pitch the need to fund good causes openly to your colleagues at a open meeting, ratify the quest with a vote and with public input. If you need some bookkeeping to limit the total pool of money available and to ensure no single member gets too many allocations, that could be done, but I think it would be better than this present system that we've been doing for the last 15 years or so. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim Gardner?
Just one comment on that, is that actually, if you look at the money and where it was spent, some of it was spent in specific districts, but a number of them were citywide. For example, three of us contributed to Newport Harbor High Grad Night, the Proliteracy, Friends of Harbors Beaches and Parks. These are not district devices, but benefit the community as a whole.
Okay, any other comments on the budget?
Mr. Mayor, councilpeople, Brent Jacobson, lifeguard management. If you've all noticed, it's getting sunny, warm. Surf has been up the last few weeks. Kids are getting ready to get out of school. Junior lifeguards are picking up their uniforms, and we are looking forward to providing some excellent levels of service as our residents expect. Want to thank you for heeding our concerns, directing Dave to take a hard look at it. Mr. Kiff, it was a long proposal. Chief Morgan, Chief Williams, lot of unsung heroes, Terry Cassidy, Mr. Hunt, who kind of gave us some help on the inside, behind the scenes. The amount of numbers that Susan's had to go through has been mind-boggling. It's truly been a team effort, and we're excited that summer's here. We've already noticed that parking lots have been packed, and you probably might have noticed there hasn't been a lot of parking in front of your house, Mayor Hen, in the last few weekends. So it was a definite team effort, and I think we're going to have a good product, and I'm looking forward. These junior lifeguards are really super excited. I also want to thank Councilman Curry and Mayor Hen, who kind of took a, they put themselves up and shielded the public employees a little bit, most recently on Fox Business News. A lot of bad things have been said about us lately, and they actually stood up and kind of gave a proper perspective of where we fall in this organization, and it kind of made us feel like we are a valued resource. So thank you, and have a good evening.
Okay, any other comments on the budget? All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
If there's anyone that wants to speak on the Historical Society, now's the time to do it. I don't know if there's anyone out there, but now's the time.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Craig Page. I'm with the Balboa Island Museum and Historical Society. Balboa Island's a unique area of the city of Newport Beach. We have 3,000 permanent residents, about 1,700 households, 70 businesses, and we have a large surface area of 0.2 square miles that accommodates all those people and uses. We're a tourist destination for locals, Californians, out-of-state visitors, international visitors who enjoy visiting the island, and we're the only island in Newport Bay with a public boardwalk and beaches around the entire island. The museum serves not only as a repository for Balboa Island memorabilia, but also as a visitor's center for all of those visitors. We were formed in 1999 originally to acquire the old fire station on Marine Avenue, but we weren't able to do that. We're now at 502 South Bayfront, have been there since 2002. We have memorabilia in the museum that you won't find elsewhere, including Ruth Hershey Finley's 1936 family photographs of the market spot, now known as Hershey's Market, the Beek family's model of the ferry that the Beek brothers enjoyed playing with as youngsters. It's about five feet long, two and a half, three feet deep. Personal photographs of residents and visitors enjoying Balboa Island over the decades, including a 1925 photo of Robert Parks at age three in a rowboat on the Grand Canal. We have recently established an historic home plaque program. We have about 120 plaques on homes on Balboa Island for homes 60 years and older. We also have a colored brochure, a self-guided walking home tour. We have an all-volunteer staff. We keep the museum open on Wednesdays, Fridays, and Saturdays throughout the year. We welcome visitors who are returning back to the island, and... We welcome visitors who are returning back to the island and introduce new Balboa Island visitors to local services as part of our visitor service that we have. We point them to local boat rentals, fishing locations, charter boats, restaurants, and shops, and suggest ferry rides for those that aren't familiar with it, over to the Balboa Peninsula and the beaches and the shops over there. We're currently working on some new efforts that would give us more community visibility. We've started a Friends of the Museum membership program. We have over 100 members after only three weeks of effort. We've organized a new group of Balboa Island residents and merchants who are working with us to establish a greater visibility, visibility downtown on Marine Avenue, and we hope that comes to fruition very, very soon. We're grateful for past support we've received from the city and hope that the city will continue to support our renewed effort to bring the charm and the history of Balboa Island closer to our many residents and visitors. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Any other comments on the budget? All right, then, I'll take public comment on any subject, including closed session items. Does anyone wish to make a comment on any of that?
Mr. Mayor, city council members, and meeting participants, my name is Don Rapinski, and I'm here today on behalf of the many of us who support Dennis Holland and his historic yacht restoration project. I moved to Newport in 1953, when there seemed to be boat builders on every corner. In fact, two of my Harbor High School classmates were living on a boat they were building while finishing school. I have always found Newport Beach to be an exceptional place, filled with exceptional people, doing exceptional things, many of which are related to boating. For those of you who don't know Dennis Holland, he is one of the most exceptional shipwrights on the West Coast of America, with a lifetime of experiences working on boats of all kinds. He built a 35-foot sailboat to sell for materials to build a 118-foot Pilgrim of Newport, a replica of a privateer like the boats that America used against the British during the Boston Tea Party. The Pilgrim has been renamed the Spirit of Dana Point and is operated today as a historic vessel that is used by the public for educational sailing experiences. Dennis is uniquely qualified to restore the historic yacht Shawnee as a master craftsman with the necessary experience, tools, and material sources. He also has a nearly lifelong experience with the Shawnee, having sailed on her when he was just eight. The historic Shawnee has an exceptional history. She was designed by Arthur Bennie and commissioned to be built by the famous shipbuilders, Lolly and Sons, in New Ponset, Massachusetts in 1915, by Mark Fontana. Mr. Fontana was one of the founders of the Bank of America, and the town of Fontana was named after him. The Shawnee was launched in San Francisco in 1916, after being shipped on a freighter through the Panama Canal to the Bay Area. She participated in a number of races, including a thrilling race to Tahiti in 1924. She became the flagship of the St. Francis Yacht Club and spent several years during World War II commissioned by the Navy as a submarine patrol boat off the California coast. In 1955, she was purchased by Alan Adler, a longtime member of the Newport Harbor Yacht Club, who brought her to Newport Harbor, where Dennis and his son eventually worked on her to maintain her. She was given to Dennis by the Adlers when they were unable to keep or sell her. On May 2nd, 2006, Dennis received permission from the city of Newport Beach to restore the yacht Shawnee at his property on Holiday Road, with no time deadline for completion. Since then, he has spent more than 1,100 hours of time and approximately $80,000, taking the steps necessary to properly restore the nearly 100-year-old wooden Shawnee. A longtime neighbor of Dennis Holland and supporter of his exceptional project, I would like to propose to city council make an exception to their current policy regarding the Shawnee and rescind the administer, the fines administered by the city, and if you can find it in your hearts, even grandfather the project in according to the original agreement.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comment? Seeing none, we'll adjourn to close.
I'm sorry.
Excuse me?
I apologize.
Okay.
Hi, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Thank you for hearing us today.
Ma'am, your, your name is?
Sorry, Julie Cargus, and I'm Dennis Holland's daughter. There are just a couple misconceptions going on about the project, and we just wanted to straighten out the record so that you guys knew how much time that my dad and my brother have put into the boat. The restoration project is to preserve history and for personal use for our family. Once it's done, it's not a commercial project. My dad has not received any offers to fund the move of the boat, so he hasn't rejected any offers. I'm not clear on why Mr. Hill considers this a clear case of breaking the law. A city employee was present when the boat was unloaded and approved the exact spot that it sits at today. My dad did reapply for the new permit, but it was rejected since he didn't put a completion date on there. He didn't want to put a completion date because that's a huge project, and he didn't want to give the wrong date, so that's why he didn't do that. Mr. Hill also mentioned the boat has had a negative impact on the neighborhood. I figured you may have meant financially, so I had a Realtor pull the comparative market analysis, which has showed a significant increase in the average sale price per square foot from $401 to $454 over the period that the boat has sat there. You know, this is not a game to my dad. He took the permission to put the boat there seriously, and he wouldn't have done it. In fact, he said daily almost that he wished you guys wouldn't have given him permission because we wouldn't be here today having this problem. So I hope that you guys will help take responsibility for your decision in allowing him to put it there and help find resolution so that we can all move forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor and councilmembers, my name's Devin Dwyer. I'm here as a citizen. I live in Huntington Beach, but I feel like I'm vested in Newport Beach. I grew up at the Sea Scout Base down here, learned how to sail aboard the Argus, and actually own her now under a foundation called the Argus Foundation. I'm one of the founders. I think Newport Beach has a valid heritage in wooden boats down here. When Serena and the Goodwill used to sit down in the harbor, there were plenty of other schooners as well. I grew up with, with Mr. Holland and him building the Pilgrim out on Santa Ana Street. There were plenty of others that I can think of that are part of the heritage of Newport Beach. When I think of wooden boats, there's Bob Sloan with Spike Africa, Ernie Minnie, Minnie Ship Challeri. He's had several schooners. One of my first boats, my actual very first boat, was built by Donald Peterson, which was a Viking. So I, I feel that Mr. Holland, in trying to restore the vessel and having permission, should continue with that permission to be able to finish the boat. I've seen him do a lot of restoration projects, not only vessels, but also cars as well. So he will complete, I've seen him complete all his other projects, so I have no fear that this is just a, an ongoing project. I would assume he'll have it done in the next 10 to 15 years. Budgetary, you know, if he's looking for donations to try and keep his project going, I know how difficult it is in this, this with the Argus Foundation. We're having to raise a million dollars to put a new bottom on the boat of the Argus. So right now, it's extremely difficult times. We're raising a little bit of funds, but hopefully, we're in the turnaround at this point, and we'll be able to continue fundraising. And I assume it'd be the same with his project. So I'm just here on his behalf in speaking. If you have any questions on the budget, I could do that as well. Thanks.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, my name is Jay Greer. I've been a resident of Newport Beach since 1935. I've been a professional boat builder since 1950, and I'm a published author for Wooden Boat Magazine as well as Cruising World Magazine. And in addition, I'm a former board member of the Wooden Boat Foundation in Port Townsend, Washington. And just recently, I've been requested to participate in a program of theirs known as Ask a Shipwright. In fact, my entire life has been dedicated to the design, construction, restoration, and operation of classic watercraft built of wood. And since I have lived here as long as I have, I remember Newport in the old days, and Newport was at one time the wooden boat capital of the West Coast. Yachts from all over the world came here in order to have work and services done which could not be found elsewhere. South Coast Company and Lido Shipyard, to name a few, were capable of hauling boats nearly as large as 150 feet in length for needed repairs and maintenance. Schooner Row, which was already mentioned, off of Lido Island, hosted three to four world-class schooners. Newport Beach has been both a haven for yachts as well as commercial watercraft, and we are the, we once were the center of the boating world for the West Coast. Unfortunately, this has changed somewhat, and the large boat hauling facilities are gone, giving way to storage and parking lots for other kinds of boats. We have a historical maritime museum here in our harbor, but sadly, we have no large classic yacht to remind us of our past heritage as a prestige boat harbor. San Diego has a premier maritime museum that features several square riggers, as well as the famous Sloop Butcher Boy and Paul Whittier Steam Yacht Medea. San Francisco also has an impressive waterfronts facility, as well as features, and features several historic small craft for public to view. Port Townsend, Washington is now designated as the West Coast Mecca for all phases of wooden boat design, construction, and restoration. Sadly, my own hometown of Newport Beach is now taking a low tide mark so far as the preservation of wooden watercraft is concerned, and that's something that has made us famous to boat owners the world over, but that has changed now. But we're here today to discuss the future of the famous Lolly-built boat Shawnee. This is a classic historic vessel in every sense of the word. She is now nearly 100 years old, and she has been, the fact that she was still afloat after years of neglect is a tribute to the skill of her builders, who used only the finest materials for her construction. Her keel boats that support the 59,000-pound lead ballast keel are, are in nearly as good a shape as they were the day they were installed and will be used again as the boat is reconstructed by our owner and custodian, Dennis Holland.
Sir, your time actually has expired. Will you be finishing shortly?
I have one more paragraph to read, sir.
I hope, is it a short one?
Well, I can paraphrase this here.
All right.
Some of this is, my feeling is that Dennis needs time to stabilize the boat so that it can be moved, and he intends to move it eventually. But I would like to see the city of Newport Beach take on Shawnee in, in spirit, as a civic project that can be used to educate our children, their parents, and grandchildren in ways of skills that are dangerously close to being lost in only one generation. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. Any other public comment?
Good afternoon. My name is Anne Lawrence Greer. I'm married to a boat builder, understand wooden boats very well. I've lived in Newport all of my life. I have grown up with wooden boats, sailboats, and Balboa Island and the water's been part of my history. I made a call yesterday. On several occasions over the years, I've done freelance articles for Wooden Boat Magazine. They are always on assignment. They are not just speculative articles. I talked to the editor, Matt Murphy, yesterday, and for those of you not familiar with Wooden Boat Magazine, it's a professional magazine, which goes to a circulation of over 100,000 people. The majority, over 50% of the readers, are corporate executives, administrators, and professionals. When I write for a magazine, I try to be realistic. The story that I am talking about with the editor is not one of politics. It is not one of controversy. It is a story of a boat, Shawnee, and it's a story of the boat builder, Dennis Holland. I asked Matt if he had a background of Dennis Holland. He knew, he had heard about what was going on out here, but that's something that can either be put in by somebody else in a, in a news blurb, if it's important. In my picture, this story is one that needs to be told. It's a story of history, and it's a story of living history and Dennis. I need an ending, though. This is not an article that can be written if it is unfinished, and that is what Wooden Boat calls an unfinished article, that there is no significant, no ending in touch here. So as members of the council and the city, and I would like to ask you to help write the ending on a very positive note for an article that could be deemed as part of the history of Newport Beach and a very infamous boat builder. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comment? All right. Seeing none, we'll adjourn to closed session.